The Columbus City Council Meeting for December 2nd, 2024 will now come to order. The open mea- in conjunction with the Open Meetings Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
We're not going to do that.
I am sorry, we're gonna do the oath of office first. This is a, a meeting that we swear in our, our new member and our re-elected members. Do you want us to stand?
We have to stand.
It does say stand.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and please state your name.
I, James Bulkley.
Charlie Barr.
A.J. Polansky.
Ron Schilling.
Do solemnly swear
That I will-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I faithfully and impartially
Perform the duties of
Perform the duties of mayor.
City council.
City council.
City council.
Perfect. According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Nor that I am a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates
Or organization that advocates.
To overthrow, overthrow the government.
To overthrow the government.
Of the United States or of this state.
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time, I am in this position
And during such time, I am in this position
I will not advocate
I will not advocate.
Nor become a matter, member of any political party
Nor become a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates
Or organization that advocates.
To overthrow the government
To overthrow the government.
Of the United States or of this state.
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Polinsky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Please rise for our National Anthem.
How about a prayer?
I am sorry, please rise for the prayer.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say, can you see by the stars that he lies? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's best gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars do the perilous skies? O'er the ramparts we watch, first the gallants we stream. How the rocket's red glare, the host's dim air, came through through the night; the fire was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Should I welcome everybody first? Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during our council meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to come forward and address the council regarding any agenda items, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, with that, we'll move on to appointments of city officers.
Item six, appointment of city officers. To the council, last time we did this, we did one motion for all, so I'll read them all. And then if there's no objection, we'll just request one motion to cover all of them, so we don't have to make several different motions. So, item six A, Tara Vasatchek is city administrator. Item six B, the law firm of Sipple, Hanson, Emerson, Schumacher, Klutman, and Velour's LLC as city attorney. Item six C, Kipton L. Anderson, M.D., as city physician. Item six D, Shereah Coat, Shoet? Shoet, as city clerk. Item six E, Richard J. Bogus, P.E., as city engineer and street superintendent. Item six F, Heather Linsley as finance director. So on item six, there is a motion, if somebody would like to make.
I recommend the mayor's appointment be ratified.
Second. We have a motion and a second to ratify the fol- those following appointments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item seven is election of council president.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Rich Jablonsky as council president.
Second. Are there, we have a motion and a second?
Or we have none.
Do we have to do this?
So if you go down.
Oh.
You weren't waiting all day to do that, were you?
Yeah.
Call for nom-
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Thank you. If none, a motion has been made. Let's have a motion to close the nominations, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the nominations. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. We have, I need a motion to elect our nominee.
I would make a motion to elect our, Rich Jablonsky.
Second. We have a motion and a second to elect Councilman Rich Jablonsky as council president. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Congratulations, Rich.
Item eight, appointment of council members to Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee and the Public Property Safety and Works Committee. Item eight A, council members Cynthia Alarconz, Troy Heimer, Rich Jablonsky, and A.J. Polinsky to the Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee, and council members Charlie Barr, Catherine Lopez, Ron Schilling, and J. Print Roth to the Public Property Safety and Works Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the, these appointments be ratified.
Second. We have a motion and a second to ratify these appointments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item nine, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item nine A, minutes of the November 18th, 2024 city council meeting. Item nine B, minutes of the November 18th, 2024 Community Development Agency meeting. Item nine C, minutes of the November 18th, 2024 Civil Service Commission meeting, certifying police officer candidate Evan Cardenas. Ev- item nine D, appointment of A.J. Polinsky to the Community Development Agency. Item nine E, reappointments of John Brzezinski, Brad Hanson, and Lynn Suits to the Board of Park Commissioners for three-year terms. Item nine F, resolution number R24-133 approving, approving the year-end certification to the Nebraska Department of Transportation of Richard J. Bogus as the street superintendent for January 1st through December 31st, 2024. Item nine G, resolution number R24-134, reaffirming the city's intent to provide or expand municipal solid waste collection services. Item nine H, resolution number R24-135, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item four, nine I, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve these items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item 12A, application from the Venue Steakhouse and Convention Center LLC, doing business as Prime Ten Steakhouse and Venue for Retail Class C Liquor License located at 4174 63rd Avenue, and Stacy Schaefer as the manager.
Sorry, is there anyone here, we don't, is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a representative?
There sure is, and if you-
I could.
Cory, why don't you please come forward?
Could you provide a little information about the venue and its opening time and what, what are you gonna do and how are you gonna do it?
Well, we're gonna be hopefully opening by the middle of January into February. It's been kind of a long run, so-
Cory, could you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Please, your address. Sorry, I'm Cory Schaefer, owner of- Thanks, Rich. Prime Ten Steakhouse and Venue. Um, like I said, we'll be open into January into February, depending on construction, but the way it look, and it's gonna be probably around February 1st. Um, it's gonna be a fine dine steakhouse in the front. Um, we'll have a, we have an awesome menu. We've already hired a great chef. Um, so that's, you know, the front area will be steakhouse, the back area will be for events, weddings. Uh, we'll have Christmas parties, conventions, um, about anything that you could put back there. So it's a 10,000 square foot area, but you can hold, you know, quite a bit, a lot of different kinds of parties, so, and different events.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Cool. Yep.
Any other ki- any, anyone else with any comments? Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by, no, I'm sorry, we have to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. Need a motion to close. We do. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Now we need a motion for the liquor.
I would move, make a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application from the Venue Steakhouse and Convention Center LLC for a retail Class C liquor license, and Stacy Schaefer as manager.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Brings us up to new business.
Item 18A, quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC, and the amount of $10,866.30 for citywide computer protection software.
Anyone with a motion to approve, or to purchase this?
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC for computer protection software be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept this quote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 18B, quote from RDO Truck Center, and the amount of $157,616 for semi tractor for the transfer station. This is CIP 24-40.
May I move that the quote from RDO Truck Center for semi trac- tractor be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from RDO Truck Center. Any discussion? I do see this came through the, the quoting system, uh, and I can't.
Soul source.
Soul, soul, soul source, yes. All right, without any further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 18C, quote from Motorola Solutions and Electronic Engineering, and the total amount of $22,206.81 for radio equipment for the fire department.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the quote from Motorola Solutions and Electronic Engineering for radio equipment to be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this quote from Motorola Solutions and Electronic Engineering. Uh, any discussion?
What?
I found it interesting that it gets reimbursed back to us. Do you wanna, you just maybe say why? What, what it is?
Sure. These, every year, the hazmat governance group, uh, which is all the chiefs from the departments who participate in hazmat team, meet together. The state has funds through the Homeland Security Program that they distribute to the hazmat teams. This year, we put into, um, for a couple more repeaters and some vehicle, uh, radio equipment, which helped us reduce our ask a couple meetings ago. Uh, it just, this funding came through for us after that. So this is just closing up that project using state funds. That'll be reimbursed as we have recently with some other purchases.
Very good. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 18D, authorization for fire engine repairs and reallocation of the, um, fire department and general operating funds of up to $25,000.
Mr. Mayor, I move, um, the fire engine repair and reallocate, to reallocate general, general operating funds up to $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Authorize the fire engine repairs and the reallocation of general operating funds up to $25,000. Any comments or discussions? Again, Chief, you may just give a brief comment on what we're doing here.
Sure. Our 2001, 2003 Pierce Fire Engine that runs out of Station 2 needs quite a bit of repairs. Um, we don't know how in-depth these repairs are gonna be. One of the major ones is the radiator, which we're gonna attempt to repair, but could need replacement once they get into it, uh, to check for corrosion. And there's just a few electrical items that need to be changed, both on the pump and in the cab. So we're taking, we're asking to take $25,000 from our PPE, our personal protective equipment line, to reallocate to this and get those repairs made.
All right, any comments or questions?
Well, I just wonder, is it getting time that we need to start looking at a replacement?
Yes. I, I've, I've started some preliminary processes on that. Uh, I'm not yet prepared to discuss them. I don't have numbers or anything like that, but it would not be, that request would not come until the next fiscal year through the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 18E, plan specifications and estimate of cost and the amount of $2,950,000, and authorization to advertise for bids for concrete paving improvements 2025 and the 11th Street sidewalk improvements. CIP 23-DTR-003. The plans and specs are on file in the engineering department. This is CIP numbers 2071, 75, 2346, and 2405.
Well, counsel, somebody wanna make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move the plans and specification estimates of costs and authorization to advertise bids for concrete paving improvements 2025 and 11th Street sidewalk improvement, GDBG 23-DR-DTR-003 be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve what you just said.
Thanks.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 18F, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any council member comments this evening? Seeing none, the only comment I would have is a welcome to our newest council member, A.J. Polinsky. We welcome you to the council, A.J.
Thank you.
All right, we, do any, yes, sir?
I'd like to invite the, the public to the, uh, the concert this follow, this coming Sunday at 2:00, the Vertical Voices, uh, it's a community choir is putting on a cantata. And, um, it should be pretty nice. So we'd invite everybody to come.
And that is Sunday the eighth?
Sunday the eighth.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock in the afternoon.
Columbus High School.
At the high school.
Yes.
At the high school.
Okay, awesome. All right, any other comments from council members? All right, we move on to resolutions.
Item 19A, resolution R24-136, approving employment agreement with city administrator Tara Vasatchek.
Mr. Mayor, I move for resolution number R24-136 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-136. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 19B, resolution number R24-137, amending the personnel manual with regard to language pay, accrual of vacation, sick leave pay, holiday leave, written reprimands, and disciplinary actions.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-137 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-137. Any discussion? Looks like mainly some housekeeping and cleaning up of the personnel manual.
Yeah, this last, uh, within the last 12 months, we conducted a wage and benefit study, which we do every three to five years. It been, uh, 2019 was the last one completed. Um, there's a number of, all, all wages and benefits were covered in that study. Um, and then that's obviously, um, open public record. There is a number of things where we were behind the average comparability, so that's, these changes reflect bringing us up to comparability in these areas, and also, um, what kind of brought is bringing it forward. Um, quickly is, a number of these are part of the negotiation for the police department union contract, which is the next item on the agenda.
Awesome, all right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 19C, resolution number R24-138, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Columbus Police Department, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 72, effective December 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2029.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-138 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-138. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 19D, resolution number R24-139, approving the change order number one with Scree Tech LLC, and the amount of $29,987.42 for fire pri- fire separation wall construction and extension of the three working days for the A Place Tea Hangar Project, CIP number 23-30.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R24-139, change order number one for Scree Tech be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R24-139. Any discussion?
Question, is, is this an oversight of, we miss it, or?
Or is this a-
I think it's an addition, if I read it right.
And is it the state telling us something new that we have to do, or that has to be done?
Yeah, so the architect, design architect didn't think it needed to be that way, but the, did they have to turn plans in, not only to us, but the state fire marshal? And the state fire marshal indicated they did have to have the separation. There are other options, like, uh, the sprinkler system, but that's way too expensive. So this is the lesser of the option, but yes, the state fire marshal is requiring this to meet their codes.
Okay.
So we're-
And I think it's noteworthy to show that it's still under the total-
Yeah.
CIP number that we have budgeted, even with the addition of this change order.
That's good news.
But I mean, I guess, do, is it a new requirement from the state, or is it just something that was missed?
Yeah, it was how the architect interpreted it and, and didn't interpret it correctly, how the state farmer code was written.
Okay. All right. So nothing back on the architect?
Uh, no.
They have a clause.
They have a clause. Can we have a clause? Can we have a clause? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R24-139. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 19E, resolution number R24-140, selecting the design build delivery system for the concession and restroom building at Gerard Park, and desi- designating city engineer Rick Bogus to serve as the performance criteria developer. This is CIP number 25-34.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R24-140.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-140. Any discussion? If I read this right, it's to get things moving and, and started, so that in '25, '26, the construction probably takes place. Is that correct? All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 19F, resolution number R24-141, authorizing the Downtown Business Improvement District Board to use collected business improvement district number three assessment funds to make enhancements in the designated district.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-141 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R24-141. Any discussion? And this is just a, another way of out, being able to allocate some of the BID funds that are coming in. I mean, reading through it, it makes sense.
Yeah, the BID board has been looking at ways to improve the downtown areas, so they're looking at putting up banners, um, doing permanent lighting in Frankfurt Square, and putting in planters. Um, they have assessment money already collected for these items. Um, but we wanted a resolution in place where the maintenance and upkeep and all of that is on the BID board as long as it's in existence, so that they have to budget for it, and it's not going to come out of any taxpayer dollars or anything like that. So that's pretty much what, pretty much what this resolution is about, and you'll be seeing those improvements probably this spring, early summer, so.
But they won't come, every improvement won't come before us. This is just to clarify who's responsible for the upkeep.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item nineteen G, resolution number R two four dash one four two, approving the loan agreement with Mad Fitness LLC and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for purchasing real estate and or fitness equipment. Using the Economic Development Plan Funds as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Review Committee.
Mr. Mayor, move the resolution number R twenty-four dash one four two be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two four dash one four two. Any discussion?
Just a comment, this project isn't just twenty-five thousand, it's a pretty significant project. Northeast Economic Development was involved in some funding, and so hopefully, we have to applaud these people that try to repurpose our buildings downtown and try to do the best they can to make Columbus really the great place to live in. So I have to applaud it for going forward with this.
And that'd be a nice improvement for Twelve Street there.
And for the public's knowledge, would someone give the address? Which took me forever, Twelve Street, which I had to dig to find. You had to go through all the, I mean, it.
It's like about twenty-five, twelve, Twelve Street. It's the old Midwest Glass Building.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. I do think it's helpful to have the real address on an item, you know, when we present it, not only to ourselves, but to the public. I think that's very useful when you're trying to know what, what we're talking about. Anyway, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve R two four dash one four two. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item nineteen H, resolution number R two four dash one four three, approving the loan agreement with Platt County Fair Foundation and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to support a feasibility and economic impact analysis. Using Columbus's Economic Development Plan Funds as recommended by the CARC.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-four dash one four three be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two four dash one four three. Any discussion?
Can we hear about this?
Well, I think we've got a gentleman in the audience that could tell us if he'd like to come forward. And if he wouldn't like to come forward, he should come forward anyway.
That's assuming I could hear what he asked. Jeff Johnson, Vice President and Treasurer of the Platt County Fair Foundation. So I would answer any questions that you may have about this.
Purpose, what, where we, what are you, just anything and everything? You're just throwing it all in a hat and seeing what falls out, or what, do you have a, anything specific as a foundation?
Specific with the foundation?
No, with this study that you're looking at.
The study is a pretty all-encompassing study, is when we put the foundation together, this project, talking about having a new fairgrounds or repurposing the existing Ag Society fairgrounds, has been going on for probably seven or eight years. I believe the mayor was originally in it. Covid hit, we stopped, then Mr. Pillen decided to run for governor, kind of slowed us down again. But over the last several years, we've talked to the Ag Society, and we struck an agreement with them where they deeded the ninety-seven acres plus or minus to the foundation. It's a five oh one C three foundation, to try to determine what to do with the ground and how to build a new fairgrounds. So as we, as our board got together and started talking about this, we quickly realized we don't have the expertise to do a, a study of, of this and what to happen to this ground. So with the recommendation of, of HDR and Burlington Capital out of Omaha, they recommend, recommended stone planning to do a feasibility study. And the feasibility study is really an in-depth study of the entire Platt County area. And, cause we didn't know how many acres it would take to build a new fairgrounds, whether it should be built onsite, outside. They're gonna survey the public, they're gonna talk to community leaders, cause the project, without a doubt, whatever happens in this project, it's gonna be transformational for Platt County and, and for Columbus. Either if we stay on the existing ninety-seven acres, I'm sure that a new fairgrounds doesn't need ninety-seven acres. Tara had a great suggestion, if we decide to stay there or leave, whatever happens, is to do a feasibility study and have a plan, a business plan, as to what could happen to this property. To show what may, may go forward in the years. It's gonna take a few, few years to be able to do this project, but it's, we really think it's gonna be transformational for us. It, it took a long time to get to this point. We have the five oh one C three because that, we really believe that's the only way we can raise money. Cause I, from, I don't think the county's gonna give anybody any money. I don't know if the city would give us any money, but there is a lot of money sitting in foundations, sitting in Omaha, Nebraska right now, and that would be our focus. Once we get this feasibility study done and can analyze what we need to do, then we try to take it to the next step. We've applied with, for a grant from the county, and we're on, I think, December seventeenth, I believe, for the county supervisors to do twenty-five thousand also. The cost of the study's fifty-five thousand, the foundation has five thousand dollars, it's about all the money that we have, and we'll commission the study. The study will take twelve to fourteen weeks. They're going to interview people, they're going to, these, these, you know, Chicago, I had some hesitation about hiring a consultant from Chicago. This planning company has done things in Papillion and Gretna. They also are doing the new lodge in Ibrara State Park, so they are, they know Nebraska. So we felt comfortable in, in going forward if we could find the money. And we didn't wanna mortgage the property, we didn't wanna go ask for donations. We felt the best way was to try to approach the city and the county, cause the, the fact of the matter is, if the city and county would not be behind the project, why would anybody wanna go forward? I mean, that, that's kind of where we arrived at, and we think it's gonna be really, really transformational. I hope I live long enough to see the new fairgrounds done, because Ag Park is, since the horse racing's not there anymore, the facilities have a lot of deferred maintenance. And so it's just, we're gonna study them, that's what these people do, study the facilities, look around, see what's available, and, and we'll, we'll make the best decision. The city gets a copy of the study, the county, if they approve, will get a copy of the study, which I think should go a long ways to, to economic development in Platt County. I get calls all the time, do you wanna send ten acres, do you wanna sell twenty acres? No, we, we don't know what we're gonna do, so that's why we need the study, to do it right, cause you only get one shot to do it right.
So Jeff.
Be like this building.
So Jeff, like with you in front of us, let's just reiterate, because we hear so many great things that are going on, and most of it's the rumor mill. There has been no decisions made on the future of Ag Park. This is all part of what will become the possible future of Ag Park. Anyone who thinks they know what's happening at Ag Park doesn't know what they're talking about.
I've, I've heard a lot of things that went.
SCOTUS is not going to Ag Park. I'm just telling you all the great things everybody thinks they know in Columbus.
No decision has been made, and no decision will be made until we have the best information possible. And then whether we can raise.
Sure.
The amount of money. That it would be, the building would be multipurpose, it could hold anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred people for, for indoor events. There could be an amphitheater involved, there could be an arena for livestock. I mean, there's, the possibilities are endless, we just don't, the people on the board don't have the abilities to do it. And I, we recruited a really good board, very diverse, very good business people, and we'll, we'll try to do the best for Columbus and Platt County. That's the only reason we would do it, it isn't because we don't have things to do.
Well, it's a good, good use of our Citizen Environment Review money to, to develop these type of things, so we wish you well.
Keep us.
We'll need a lot of prayers and help as this goes forward, and I appreciate the council approving this twenty-five thousand. Now we'll just see what the county will do.
All right, any, any other comments for, questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve R two four dash one four three. All those, all those opposed nay, aye, and all those. Ah, okay. Yes, I am, having a tough time. Yea or nay? Motion went yea. All right, we have no further business tonight, we, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.